I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpaulin Springs on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and eighteen at six thirty P. M. Row call.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Chaplain Craig Aguirre. From the Florida Hospital North Pinellas, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we begin this new year mindful and appreciative for the many blessings we received in two thousand and seventeen. As we look forward to the new challenges and opportunities that lie ahead in two thousand and eighteen, we ask for wisdom and understanding for our city leadership. And also ask that you bless our dear community and each family represented here. May we prosper and grow in health and in peace, always asking in your name, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the commission meeting and thank you for being here tonight. We go to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium. We're here now. I'd like to announce that item number twenty-three, the ordinance two thousand and seventeen dash thirty-five, the application seventeen dash one nineteen, City of Tarpaulin Springs Land Development Code Amendment. To a T R C and fit schedule sections is deferred to January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. And we are now going to the proclamation. Item number one is the Greek History Month. The proclamation reads, "The City of Tarpaulin Springs, Florida, whereas in the eighteen eighties, John Cheney introduced the first local sponge business to Tarpaulin Springs. Utilized many blocks and whites from the Key West and the Bahamas and a few Greek immigrants using the method of hook sponging. And whereas in nineteen oh five, John Kokoris introduced the technique of sponge diving to Tarpaulin Springs with divers from the islands of Agina and Indra of the Saroni Gulf. Later, he brought five hundred deep sea diver crews from the Dotekonese Islands of Kalimnos, Halki and Simi. Revoltzalizing the local sponge industry and causing Tarpaulin Springs to be known as the sponge capital of the world. And whereas Greeks introduced the Epiphany Service with men diving for the cross. A spring by which commemorates the baptism of Christ attracts people from America and the world on January sixth each year. And it's the largest Epiphany event in America. Whereas the Greek community started restaurants, grocery stores, coffee shops and taverns. To sell the products needed by Greek residents in which have become an important element in Tarpaulin Springs commerce. And whereas the Greek culture has significantly enhanced the Tarpaulin Springs community. And whereas the population of Tarpaulin Springs has the largest percentage of Greek Americans in the United States. And whereas the Tarpaulin Springs area Historical Society has established a special exhibit. To commemorate and celebrate the contribution made by the Greek immigrants from the mainland and from the Greek islands. And now therefore, I Chris Alahuza's by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpaulin Springs, Florida to hereby proclaim the month of June, uh, January, two thousand and eighteen. Be recognized in support of Tarpaulin Springs Greek History Month. Ed? Mister Huffman? Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, this is great and uh. Would like to visit the exhibit?
Yes. Thank you.
Ed, do you want to say a few words, bud? Sure, thanks. Mr. Leana, you want to say a few words too?
Good evening. I'm Ed Huffman and um, it's it's the very first time ever in my life, having been at this podium a number of times, that I've been here for the first item of the agenda. So that's exciting next to the prayer and pledge allegiance, I guess. But anyway, I've thank you very, very much for this proclamation, Mayor. It was wonderful to to hear it read in your Greek accent. I wish you would have reread it in Greek. Maybe that would have been fun, but I'd like to invite all of you, all those people on the camera or the other end of the camera, um, to come to the Historical Society downtown Tarpon at the Depot. The um, I'm not Greek. Um, my father before me was not Greek either, but both of us has had a wonderful appreciation and pride for the Greek heritage that's part of this community. And that's a big wonderful asset and that's part of why we're here because it is such a wonderful diverse community. And as we celebrate that, um, at the at the museum, uh, you know, Julian and Phyllis have put together, um, along with what we had, we've always had great, uh, pieces of of the Greek culture represented in the museum. Because that's a fascinating part of this history, but we have a special exhibit of the Greek, uh, community represented in the museum. And we invite all of y'all to come see that for this very special month as we celebrate our Greek heritage. Did I miss anything? That's it. So anyway, so anyway, thank you to all. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments?
I just I'd just like to say thank you and I plan on coming and visiting.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you. Mister Huffman, thank you very much. Phyllis? The next proclamation is. On the Dr. Martha King Junior Day, City of Tarpaulin Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas. January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen marks the observance of the Dr. Martha King Junior Federal Holiday. Whereas Dr. Martha King Junior devoted his life advancing quality, social justice and opportunity for all. And challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work to build a more perfect union. And whereas celebrating Dr. King's life and spirit through the community-wide recognitions and service on the holiday. It's appropriate way to honor Dr. King, bringing our citizens together and strengthening our community as a nation. And whereas it is appropriate for the City of Tarpaulin Springs to support a community celebration in observance of the holiday honoring Dr. Martha King Junior. And whereas each of us can and must contribute making our communities better with increased opportunities for all our citizens. And whereas the City of Tarpaulin Springs urge all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martha King's Junior and apply his life and teachings. Of service to the inspired others and serve and remember his spirit of community. And now therefore, I Chris Alahuza's by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpaulin Springs, Florida to hereby proclaim January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen as Dr. Martha King Junior Day. Juliana Day will accept the proclamation.
Well, as Ed said, I'm this is my first time up here. In the years I've been in Tarpaulin Springs, but I want to share a little bit about the Dr. Martha Luther King Junior Foundation. Uh, we will be having our celebration this coming Saturday on January thirteenth. The lineup start at ten A. M. Uh, we are also still taking walkings, so if anyone wanted to participate, bring a float. You know, we have a challenge out there for a float contest. Your family, carers, float, come on out and celebrate with us. After while, we'll after that, we'll be at the park, Dorset Park with a great celebration. Thank you all and thank the commission for the proclamation and for your support. Thank you.
We'll be there for the parade. Are there any commission comments? Here none. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Thank you very much. The next proclamation, Commissioner Kikta will read the State of Florida Arbor Day.
Thank you. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture. That a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in the planning of more than one then more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and each state has adopted a state Arbor Day. And the state of Florida has designated the third Friday of January to be observed as Arbor Day. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs. Moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality and beautify our community. Now therefore, I Commissioner Susan Kikta, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs. Do hereby proclaim Friday, January nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen as State of Florida Arbor Day. And will this be mailed?
That will be mailed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? No. Are there any public, any public comments? Thank you. We're now going to item number four, which is discussion special events for two thousand and eighteen. Mister Laquarius will present this item.
Yes. We've been doing this the last several years, um, looking at this ahead of time. Obviously, we've had some issues with events. Um, we began putting together events for the year and getting it to you. By no means does this mean by tonight, you're approving all these events, just to lay them out. They'll be coming back through the regular special event process and go through. But obviously, you instructed me to try to give a balance to the events, a balance especially for Tarpon Avenue, Dotakonese. Concerns the shop owners, concerns of everybody involved. And I think we've worked hard to put through the schedule. If you'll see divided out through the months, um, it's pretty well representative. Not much room for a lot more on the main streets, but we have been encouraging that any new events come up. We've got opportunities on Orange Street. We've got opportunities on Court. We're going to try a couple of events on Athens Street. So there are other places, um, where we can move some of these events to as they're added, but we've got a great balance there. As you saw with the first Friday event, um, another issue's been the time of setting up. As you see, we compromised in there. When you see other events such as this. We will also do a compromise and try to increase a little bit the time that the street is left open, uh, those you'll see individually. So that concern about that will kind of kind of compromise from what some want and what the event thinks they need to have will compromise. And and you saw the first, again, the first example of it, um, with the merchants association agreeing and doing the first Friday events to do that with. Another issue we'll continue to look at is off-site parking. Right now, it's pretty difficult because there's not a lot of places to do it, but we'll continue to work on that. And we're looking at some, maybe some opportunities, a piece of the land, maybe to increase that in the future, but we'll be very aware of that in events. So I think we've accomplished with thanks to the merchants, Chamber of Commerce, everybody we've met with to put this together for you. I think it's spread out through the months and not in effect. There was one event there was a concern about in November, Black Friday weekend about Tarpon Avenue be closed. We're going to encourage maybe to move that event back to the city parking lot in Court Street or combination. So it's not have the biggest shopping weekend of the year and Tarpon Avenue closed off, so we will work with, believe the Chamber on that event and some other ones. So I think we've heard all the concerns and pretty much have them addressed here. Again, each event on here will come back to you to individually be looked at. So you can, we can show and we can, you know, show on the piece of paper and the document that's been done, but everybody's been real cooperative. And I think we've accomplished everything that this commission was looking for for us to do at the beginning of the year, again, to balance the needs of all concerns downtown, the docks and the other areas.
Thank you. Mister Laquarius, the list that you provide us, this is the events that we already done in two thousand and seventeen, correct?
Most, most of them are are events that we've done and established events.
Yeah. Are there any new ones in there now?
Not many that's on the, none that I know of that's on the main, on the main quarters. There may be a few of them that are on the other, the other places where I mentioned.
Thank you. Special events, it brings a lot of people to Tarpaulin Springs. It's very beneficial to our our local economy and of course to the local businesses, people. They're coming for the special event, but they come back again for another day. So I think it's, uh, very beneficial to everybody. And I like to express my appreciation, uh, to everyone, including the Merchants Association, the Chamber of Commerce, our staff. They're all working together and doing a very good job. Yes, we're going to have some adjustments to make. But I I think that what you just said, Mister Laquarius, I think it makes a lot of sense to look and see what schedule that we have. And if any new events comes and see if we work with them and, you know, work with them, what days that will be more appropriate and what location will be more workable for everybody. Another thing that I wanted to make sure is when we have an event down at the Sponge Ducks, we must include everyone involved there, all the way down to the south end if we can. There are some people that not, that complained to me in the past, they're not being part of it. And if we can find a way that we can include in everybody, I think that will be beneficial. Like what you just said, that we're going to have portion of it on Athens Street. So these people could be part of, uh, some of the events. The same thing for downtown. Uh, we need to, uh, find a way that everybody is included. Or we want all the business to be benefited from. Thank you for the work that our staff are doing and the cooperation of our Merchants Association. Thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Kikta, sure.
Thank you. Um, I first want to, I want to thank the Merchants Association and, um, our chamber and and like the mayor said, our city staff. Because everybody has really worked together in the past few years and, um, it's it's been very successful. Um, our first Fridays are tremendous. And all these other events have really grown through the past few years since we've all worked together as a team. And I want to thank, and I, there's a group here that puts countless hours in, um, in volunteering in our community and I can't thank you enough for that. You've brings, you've brought so many new people to our community. It's it's unbelievable. And I want to thank you for that. And I do like that we're, um, like the mayor said, is, you know, we're moving some of these, um, events to other streets in the community. So that will help, um, break it up a little bit with closing some of the streets down. Um, and. I did have a question though. Um, I forgot. There's somebody that asked me the other night if we could possibly think of doing a blues in the park. So something, I don't know if you, like a blues, like a blues festival, music, maybe on a Saturday in Craig Park or something like that. So just, I'm just throwing that out there. And I, like I said, I just want to thank you. You've all done a phenomenal job, um, in bringing so many people to our community, you know, and. We just, just if something's wrong and we have some issues or somebody's got problems or concerns, let's work it out because everything can be worked out. And again, we work as a team and, um, and, um, we can accomplish so much more if we do work as a team instead of work against one another, which has really been proven here. So thank you again.
Yeah. Permission to you?
Yes. It's funny that you mention that too, because there was talk of a Blues and Wine Festival that we talked about at one time, uh, for the city. But yes, I I counted seventy-four events and I think that's fantastic. Uh, we used to have to go to Dunedin or Saint Pete or other communities to have fun. Uh, and that's one thing our citizens say to us is that Tarpon is becoming more fun. In the last five or six years, there's been so much more happening in Tarpon Springs. People are noticing it. And I know when I was president of the Merchants Association, one of the main reasons we started events was to help our business owners and to bring people in from outside the community. Uh, of course, it's become more fun for Tarpon as well, but, um, especially off-season, we need events, uh, we need people to come into the community and see Tarpon Springs and and they will come back. So I think all these events have been successful. Um, if you go to other cities, usually events are not on side streets. They're on a main street where everybody can see you. So I I do agree that we should, uh, continue to have events, uh, on Tarpon Avenue and and, uh, Dotakonese, of course, all the way to the end. I love that we're having an event on Athens, but, you know, you go to Dunedin, you go to Saint Pete, it's on Central Avenue, it's on Main Street. And this is why events are successful in these other cities. And I'm very happy with with what we've done in the past five years with the city and the and the Chamber and the Merchants Association, bringing all these events to Tarpon and and. And I know our citizens are too, because I hear it all the time. And we want to, uh, maintain our businesses and retain our businesses here in Tarpon and and help them out. So thank you for this, Mark. Um, it's great to see the calendar and, um, and we appreciate everything that you all do for us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Thank you. And I I I want to thank both staff and those here tonight that are involved in in these events. I do think, uh, that as Ben said, we have to work together to 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 make these, um, uh, events that work for everybody. I think two events in my mind that are successful is First Friday, which I remember when when we first approved that, I thought that no one's going to come to that and it's like ridiculously successful. And then Oktoberfest. I like how Oktoberfest utilizes Safford and Orange Street in a very unique way. And Oktoberfest, I think, is just one of our coolest events that 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 we have. So when I think of successful events in Tarpon Springs. Ones that utilize streets appropriately, that service both, you know, locals, the local businesses and tourists, it's First Friday and Oktoberfest. Of course, we have snowplace like Tarpon and the huge art fest on the on 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 the Craig Park. Uh, I I do think as we add more events or we look at these, some of these smaller events, especially these arts and crafts festivals aren't really specific to a theme. We we do look at side streets, um, and I would, and and I appreciate also, you know, those that are involved in First Friday for already conceding to a later shutdown time. That was much appreciated, I think, for the for the for the, uh, local, local vendors. Uh, I'd like to see more utilization of Craig Park and other areas of town that are public that we never utilize. I mean, we have that bandstand at Craig Park and it's, it's hardly ever used. I know we're not big like ocean park. We can't have like jazz festival or whatever here, but we can, I think, more things like that. So I I I would like to see events that center more around, you know, music and the arts and and better and better utilize that, not just, you know, having an arts and crafts festival that's kind of random. Uh, every, every, every so often, but this is, this is a very good mix. The only issue I had from last year, the only one was the Black Friday one, the one that that was, I think we closed straight down for three days, uh, Tarpon Avenue. Was that the one that was closed for three days? I I took some issue with the, uh, street closure link, so we should look at each application, um, uh, you know, on on its own. And work with the vendors to make it successful, make sure we're utilizing all the parts of the town that we can. But, um, I I just want to thank all those that are involved in First Friday. I I get people constantly asking me how they can, they can get involved in that. I'm on the board of the Yacht Club and, uh, we picked up more, more members by just setting up a booth down there, so that's been very successful. And, uh, again, the more we have advanced those of 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 events, we work together, have high-quality events, um, I I think it'll be, um, a success. But I think one thing that's going to help all this is we have to look for 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 more, more park, Mark, as you just said. I think there's some lots on Tarpon Avenue. I don't know if the one at, um, is it gross in Tarpon Avenue where the Episcopal Church used to be? Something like that. We 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 need more park. I mean, there's just, we can't support the downtown with just the, with just the Mother Mirrors Lot and the lot next to the, that's not going to work. And then the Orange Street Lot. So I think, um, you know, as we expand these events, which are great, we need to expand the parking. And of course, you know, my future project of Orange Street Park, so. But thank, thank you for doing this event listing for us. And, uh, again, the sooner we can get, um, the applications in for 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 these events, uh, I think the better and we can help them make them, um. More, more, more of a, uh, 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 of a success and, um, it's a, it's a free marketing for the town and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Permission Carr?
I have nothing additional. I think everyone covered it pretty good.
Oh, great. Okay. We're now going to, uh, public comments? Any public comments on this item?
Can I add something?
David? Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for everything you guys do. We appreciate it. Yes. Thank you.
Can I add something, uh, Mayor? Mayor? Can I add something?
Sure.
Something that I I didn't say and no one's coming up to speak up from the Merchants Association Board. Is that they spent thirty-one thousand dollars marketing our city this past year. That's more than we have budgeted. So I appreciate what they do to bring in people and to advertise and market our city as well. So thank you.
That's great. David, would you come to the podium and tell us all that? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Mark, you have anything that you'd like to add? Okay, okay. We move on to the concern agenda. Item number five is Satisfaction and Release of Leans. Number six is the Attorney Feeds for Johnson and Jackson invoices nineteen seventy-one and nineteen seventy-two. Seven is the special events, Hook Kits on Fashion, March tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Number eight is the award bid number eighteen zero zero forty-six dash B dash J J Hope Street, Athens Street and Grand Boulevard. Sidewalks and curb replacement. Number nine is the award file number eighteen zero zero sixty-six dash and dash R S Bar Screen and Grid Washer Port and Services. Number ten is the award bid number eighteen zero zero thirty-six dash B dash C M Ground Manus. Eleven is the award file number eighteen zero zero sixty-seven dash and dash R S Public Art. Uh, Storytime Sculpture and number twelve is the award file number eighteen zero zero seventy. Dash C dash J J Mobile, uh, Network Communication Services. Thirteen is the award file number eighteen zero zero seventy-two dash and dash J J Single Source Purchase of, uh, Legal and Promotion Advertising. And number fourteen is to approve internal audit five-year plan. Any items that you'd like to pull? Discussion?
Um, I, if I'd like to just discuss number eleven, if I could.
Number eleven, sure.
I just have a question. I know this is, um, this is the Storytime Sculpture that we, um.
We just approved.
Right. What about the other sculpture?
Well.
It was the other sculptures down the dock?
We we approved both of them, but really the backup didn't really address the story time. So this is kind of a, this is kind of to make sure everything's. So, so this is kind of a, this is kind of to make sure everything's set with a thing. That's why we're adding that one, because in the backup, it talked about the sculpture, the docks. And we did, they did bring the other one up and we approved it, but there's really not the proper VAT backup in the vote. So we're just assuring, so this isn't anything new. This is just to reassure that it's proper, proper notice, proper things. Obviously with a statute like this, we want to make sure proper. So that would just put back on again to make sure there's no issue with the approval of the purchase. That's the only reason it was put back on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I actually had the same question because I know that we approved the NIAIDs at the same time and I thought they were all going to be purchased at the same time and probably stored until.
They are. We just, again, legally with the backup and the way it was written, we just wanted to make sure that everything was good. And, and I think, you know, whether it was or not, to make absolutely sure, we put it on this second time to make sure everything was voted on properly.
So will the NIAIDs come back then as a second time, too?
No, 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 because the backup, the backup talked about buying them. This was added in, the consensus, you know, the majority of the board wanted to go with it, but we really, it really wasn't part of the, you know, the item. It was kind of questionable if it was part of the item or not. So this is just making everything right, so there's no issues.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
I've got a couple. Maybe if we could pull 13, just to have a discussion. But I want to make just a quick statement. One of the questions when the internal auditors were here was about, their first item for the first year was going to be pertaining auditing the expenses for the water treatment plant, or I'm sorry, the reverse osmosis plant.
Yeah.
And number 14 addresses that and Mark confirmed that there is an audit clause in the agreement. So that has been researched and we're not just blindly going into the first year of the audit, not knowing if we can do that now or not. So I thought that was encouraging.
Yes, we're bringing that back because we had to check on that one before you approved the list. It is set, so the recommendation is we keep the list as is since we can do number one.
Good. Okay. Anything else?
Well, yeah, I mean, I could talk about 13 now. It pertains to advertisement in the Tampa Bay Times. And Marcus did an email about this and I know you answered me a little bit about it. Just wanted a little more information on it. With these, does the application or the applicant pay for these advertisement fees? Or is it something the city puts up for the advertisement fees?
Um, both.
There it's a combination.
Depending what it is, if it's illegal, you know, some things illegal as they do pay for, some things we're obligated to do to notify the public. So it's a combination.
So one thing I mentioned in my email to the city manager was that the beacon shows up on every single driveway in the area. The Tampa Bay Times, not speaking off the fact, but it's well-known throughout the country that newspapers have less and less subscriptions to them. I'm not really sure if we've inquired or if they just said that they don't do legal descriptions or if it's, you have to be a paying newspaper to have legal advertisements or how does that?
Us is the freedom, when we inquired about that, because the prices, obviously, you know, all of us and our procurement directors concerned about prices and we wanted to get some alternate prices. Being a free newspaper, they don't do those. So that's why you see the single source, because we call them and they don't do those type of ads.
It's just, I'm kind of surprised that they're not willing to take money for, a substantial amount of money for advertisement, that they have ads all over their papers, so.
Okay, real quick on that one.
Just what's worth is the same company.
Well, I mean, they show up to the, it's just more, it gets to more people is what I'm trying to get to also. That everybody gets every week, right? Versus the Tampa Bay Times, you might read it online versus not buying the paper any longer, something along those lines. So that's all.
I think it comes out, it comes like every, once a month or every two weeks. So it might be the frequency is an issue. We have to post, you know.
Yeah, it's not everything.
They're a free newspaper and they, that's why they don't do ads such as that.
Thanks.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I will entertain the motion.
Mayor.
You have a comment? Oh, yes. Please come forward to the podium. Yes, it is.
I was just wondering about number five, satisfaction and release of liens.
Okay.
Is that with regards to the property on Pinellas Avenue regarding, belonging to Mr. Harry Patzalidis?
I don't see his name in the group.
His name's not on there.
Okay. I, I thought that that was what it was. And I was, just wanted to ask if I could, if I would be able to get the dates of when the repairs or work or whatever it was that was done to the property before the satisfaction.
It's not part of the list.
Oh, I thought that.
No.
Okay.
Would you please state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Maria Samarcus Cloneras.
Thank you. To get that information, would you please call the police department, the court enforcement and get that information that you're looking for?
Okay.
It'd probably be a public records request in the city clerk's office. The city clerk, city clerk's office for a public records request.
Okay, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comments? Here now, I need a motion.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mary, who's this?
Yes. Item number 15 is the award bid 180006-B-RS Utility Rehabilitation and Construction Services.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. And this item, we're asking your approval for a utility rehabilitation and construction contract that we want to award to two firms based on competitive bidding. If approved, this will allow us to be more responsive in our repairs where we can immediately go to contract services if it's something that we can't complete in-house. It also provides us an ability, another source of pre-established pricing. In case we run into an emergency with our utilities, we have another option to go to, to respond quickly and, and get the work done. So this is a process we've been using before successfully and it allows us to get the utility work done in an economical manner and a competitive bidding process with pre-established pricing.
Mr. Smith, thank you. This is similar, the same concept as we had when we had the contracted for the hurricane recovery.
Yes, Mayor.
The project was done here in a couple of days with this manpower and all the equipment.
Yes, in fact, we had a citywide tree contract that we went ahead and with procurement, were able to get awarded and we're able to use those services for our post-hurricane thing with that established pricing, which was very helpful to us.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments, questions?
I have one question.
Commission Carr?
Thanks. Mr. Smith, thanks for bringing this up. Why are we using two different companies? Typically, we only see one, right? Is it just to have a contingency in place or?
It's, yeah, we, we find it's helpful to have two different firms. Sometimes depending on the project, if you need a certain responsiveness and, and one firm is engaged in other work, we have two choices. It just helps us to spread the work around a little bit and also keeps them sharp with their pencil in terms of, you know, having to compete for work.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other commission comments? Now, are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I will entertain the motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mary, who's this?
Yes. Item number 16 is the award bid 180019-B-JJ Spruce Street Extension from east of US 19 to Jasmine Street. Mr. Licorice, this is something we've been waiting for a long, long time.
This was one of those items on my bucket list, yes. Mr. Robertson, will you give the good news?
Yeah, Bob Robertson, Public Project Administration Department Director. Hey, he took the words out of my mouth. This is the long-awaited extension of Spruce Street connecting US 19 to Jasmine. Project consists of 1,100 feet of two-lane roadway with utilities, including a new water line and new water service connections for the residents that live along Spruce. That's the gist of it. If there's any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to see it completed. Is there any existing infrastructure on the, on that location now? Any manholes or anything like that?
No, but there is an existing roadway surface that's going to be torn up and rebuilt.
Permission, Kikta?
Thank you, yes.
You probably remember that, don't you?
I do. But I always thought that this was going to be paid for by, when Mr. Lindiakos put in that, those condos back there. Remember, that was part of the discussion at one time, part of the agreement. But, but I know we've changed the zoning out there so many times. I don't even, at this point, he went back and forth so many times. I was hoping that, you know, he was going to, that was going to be part of his project where he would pay for that.
Well, that's when we were going to store, you know, have the water and the runoff on this property, that didn't work. So we had to go, so the ability to make that agreement didn't work because how we had to construct the road in stormwater. So we're going to be, it's all going to be contained on our site now, so.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, it's, it's still, it's so much needed. Jasmine gets so backed up and it's just another outlet out to 19. You know, it's, it could be danger, it was a danger issue to me as well, hazard, with if there was an, an emergency or, or something, a storm. It's just another outlet for people to get, to get off Jasmine quicker. So it's, it's nice to see this finally. When do you think we'd have this completed?
I think the estimate of the construction schedule is 210 days from the notice to proceed. So if you do the math, that's seven months, so probably early fall.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Permission, Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. I've just got a quick question and I know we deal with a lot of bids. Just want to bring something up and ask a, a question about protecting the city in this. So the low bid is $994,000 and the upper bid is 1.6 million with everything in between. Are we protected, for instance, I mean, that's a substantial amount of money, right? $700,000, so I'm assuming that's just profit for that top bidder. Are we protected in the way we signed our agreement that if they come back and their scope of work is now more expensive in their eyes? But we could say, well, contractually, you've committed this scope of work in the estimated project and you have to stand by what you quoted? How does that work?
Yeah, we, we hold them to their bid prices. They're, this, it's not a single lump sum number. It is actually line item bid pricing. So if they come in and say, we need more money for this, we either have to make them justify that or we say, no, that's your bid price.
Okay, good news. Thanks. And then one other question, if I remember, I believe this road splits the Ford dealership. Am I right in saying that?
Yeah, it does.
Is there, is there been any working with the Ford dealership about crosswalk or anything for safety issues?
Yeah, we've spoken with them. Our section actually comes up to, I don't know if you remember that site, but there's a, there's a stormwater treatment facility that's to the east of their site there. We have spoken with them about putting crosswalks in. I don't think there's one in this plan, but we actually, we actually just met with them last week because they're looking to develop that property, expand it and add some more services. They want to add some wastewater infrastructure. And so they're, they were looking to put their infrastructure in without having to rip up our roads, which I really appreciated them coming forward to talk to us about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But at this point, that section would, that would need to be augmented later. That's not part of this job.
Okay, I'm just concerned about a safety standpoint. So if there's an opportunity to work with them for that, I would encourage it. Thank you.
Any other commission comments? Here now, any public comments on this item? Here now, I will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mary, who's this?
Yes. Item number 17 is to authorize purchase of property on North Avenue. Mr. Licorice?
Bob's still up here.
Made my turn again. So Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. This item requests board approval for a property transaction in which the city would do two things. Purchase a small piece of property and also sell a thin 10-foot slice of another property as a single transaction. The purpose of this would be to provide the city with four contiguous and adjacent properties located on the south side of MLK Boulevard between North Avenue and Distin. That to be, to be used potentially for a beautification project and an entrance feature for the Union Academy neighborhood. The sale of the 10-foot strip to, to the adjacent property owner would enable him to install privacy fencing, which would provide visual screening for, for this project. Permitting and installation of the fence would be done at the owner's expense and within 60 days, which is a requirement included in this agreement. Or the proposed, excuse me. The proposed purchase price is $7,000 for the parcel we want to buy. The proposed sale price for the 10-foot strip that we want to sell is $1,452, leaving a net cost to the city of $5,400, excuse me, $5,548 for this transaction.
And this also alleviates another problem. If you look on one of the maps, there, you'll see that property line of our property is right up against the side of their house. They have no side yard. It's one of those old, old, old things that were done. So this alleviates that problem for them. That gets us that whole corner from all sides of there. And, you know, we hope to make it a nice landscape and beautification and entranceway to the Union Academy neighborhood with moving that small sign that was by the housing development there and maybe as we're looking at signs and stuff, put a nice structure, nice landscape in and have that as a real nice. As we're looking at other entryway features that we talked about, that we're looking at the rest of the town, which we're also working on. This would be a great, beautiful entranceway to the Union Academy neighborhood. And it's hard to do with three-fourths of it with that one corner out of the way. It's kind of difficult. So this would give us all the same family, or different people, but the same family who's selling and we're giving it to. So it's within the family. And again, this is contingent upon your approval tonight that everything of the property is copacetic and all liens and stuff are settled for. So with your approval, we can do that. And then, of course, we'll be bringing it later back to you, our plans, as we look at what this entranceway stuff's going to look like.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. This is a win-win for $5,500, we'll be able to get land for the gateway for the Union Academy.
Yes.
Plus also the resident is going to solve the court enforcement issue that he has.
Yes.
Any idea when we have the gateway, you know, completed?
We're looking at all of them. Right now, we've already got the, the public architect, Karen Lemons, is coordinating our efforts with them looking at the entrance signs to bring back to you some suggestions about what we're going to do in the gateways we have and the gateway signs to improve them. We have talked about that with signage and stuff. So they are going to assist in bringing forward, again, some ideas to you of what those will look like. And Mr. Robertson and myself will continue to look at those gaps and those other corridors and where we can either do public-private partnerships or get land. So hopefully every main entranceway, eventually we can get some or more challenged in the others. But I got a good man working on it with me. So if there's any way possible, we'll try to find those, those entrances where we don't have entry features because of our inability of land and stuff. And it'll probably be through some type of public-private partnerships with people who own the land. So we'll continue those efforts as we're improving the ones we have. We'll be looking at those, those new ones. And hopefully when this commission decides, we'll have one look for those entrance signs that will be in all the different places.
Any commission comments, question?
No, I just, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, your last sentence, I think, is a good one, that they all, that we're united in all our signage, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I encourage any opportunity for the city to do any beautification projects. So I'm completely for this and thanks for bringing it to our attention. One thing I do want to bring up in this area also, that this is also a dangerous intersection. I know there's a lot of near misses in this intersection. And a young child, I believe, lost her life here about 20 years ago. This is, to me, it would be an opportune time to look at around about in this intersection to prevent coming up to the hill and coming down a hill and especially during sunset and sunrise and then having the cross pattern coming across it because you have a blind spot on a couple of the corners. So I would like to encourage at least looking at that during the beautification project as well, just to increase the safety in the neighborhood and slow down the traffic also.
Look at that also.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I will detain the motion.
True.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mary, who's this?
Yes. Item number 18 is to approve forward Pinellas Compromise and Authorize City Manager to sign approval letter regarding 9.3 acreage on the northwest corner of Rainville Road and Pinellas Avenue. Mr. Licorice, will you?
Heather Earl explained the matter she wants me to sign.
Good evening, Heather Earl of the Planning and Zoning Direct-
Good evening. Heather Earl, the Planning and Zoning Director. Essentially, what happened on this one is, we had a first reading a few months ago, and during their deliberations, Ford Pannellus saw that there were two internal wetlands. The state really regulates what you can do with those, those wetlands. So, the staff wasn't very concerned, but they would like to put them into preservation. So, we agreed to a compromise. The applicant's not here today, but they do not have a problem with this compromise. So, they've agreed as well. And so, this is the formal process with, under the countywide rules, are that you, as a board, have to agree to that compromise, so that then they can do their final reading of their ordinance at the County Board of Commissioners. And so, then they, we can then move forward with our second reading to amend a local map amendment. And I included the ordinance here, that you can see that we're now including preservation in our map amendment as well. So, that's really what the gist of this, this request is. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you very much. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikto?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mary LaHuzis?
Yes. Item number 819 is a resolution 2017-42. That's the application 17-103 and 17-118. White family properties, this is quasi-traditional. Actually, we have items 1920, 21B, and 21C. They're quasi-traditional.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because those items are quasi-judicial, we'll do the quasi-judicial that's meant the outset. If anyone in the audience is here for any of those applications, I would ask for you to please stand and be sworn if you intend to give testimony when I request that you do so. These items are quasi-judicial proceedings where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In such a hearing, the commission is required to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented, and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the city's code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. Conversely, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony in questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence first. Applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will present its testimony to witnesses. City staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to speak. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support will have an opportunity to present. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses. A motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. At this point, I would ask for any member of the Board of Commissioners to disclose any ex parte communications on any of the items identified as quasi-judicial. Seeing none, I would ask for the folks who intend to give testimony to please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony brought to given this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Our first item tonight is Resolution 2017-42, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number 17-103 and number 17-118 requesting a conditional use permit and associated site plan approval to allow for construction of 87,677 square feet of mini warehouses in two buildings consisting of 564 units on property-zoned highway business HB located on the west side of US 19, approximately 1,180 feet north of the intersection of East Klosterman Road and US 19 North, providing for findings, providing for conditions, providing for modifications that may arise at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. Resolution 2017-42 by title only, and we will turn to Mr. Earl.
Thank you. This application is essentially a combined application. They're asking for both conditional use approval and for site plan approval. The conditional use is required because the Highway Business District for mini storage has that use, requires that conditional use review. So, you're reviewing for the compatibility of the site as well as the technical criteria of the Land Development Code. Essentially, this parcel, the applicant is seeking, again, the 87,677 square feet total of mini warehouse would be broken between two buildings. Approximately 2.1 acres is actually going to be developed. The entire site is 7.42 acres. The balance of the roughly 4.63 acres is wetlands. So, the, the actual project's gonna be concentrated on 19 and the area that's already disturbed. If you're familiar with the general, this general area, this is just north of the existing Mexican restaurant. So, that was a parking area. This, they've now bought that, that property, and that's where this project's gonna go. To the south of the, on the other side of the Mexican restaurant is an existing mini warehouse as well. So, the issue of, is it consistent with the neighborhood is, this is a commercial neighborhood. The residential that is adjacent to this project, there is 4.63 acres of wetlands between that residential and this project. So, there's sufficient buffering between the residential and the proposed commercial. On the other side of the street, you do have the Mobile Home Park. Again, you have 19 between that and this project. So, there isn't really a compatibility issue here. Staff agrees that it's consistent and compatible, given the criteria of the Land Development Code being met. And with that, I'll go through some of that criteria. Essentially, what they're proposing is 561 units. The larger of the two buildings will be a multi-story building. It'll have 550 units, and then there'll be a smaller building in the rear with 14 units. And that'll be a one-story, that rear building a one-story building. The applicant did seek a variance for reduction in the parking lot requirements as far as the number of parking spaces, and they were successful in obtaining from the Board of Adjustment on July 2017, a reduction of 33%, which is allowed by, is what we allow by code. That essentially amounts to, based on the number of units, 42 parking spaces. And so, they have provided that, that parking along, along with two handicap parking spaces, which is consistent with the ADA requirements. There are proposed to have removal of about 43 trees. The applicant is proposing a split type of mitigation. They're actually replanting on the site, meeting some of their required landscaping buffers and some of their internal landscaping with some additional trees, as well as they will be paying into the mitigation fund. So, they're actually telling us at this point in the project that that's their plan for how they're gonna mitigate for their tree removal. With that, pursuant to the Land Development Code, the project is definitely conforms to the land use, the conditional uses required. It has been requested as part of this, and as a result of staff's analysis, that we find that it's consistent with and compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. So, all of the criteria under the conditional use have been met. It's consistent with the Land Development Code and with the comprehensive plan. They have met their criteria for concurrency and proven that they are consistent with all of the concurrency criteria. The project's located in the flood zone X, so there's no issues with flood zones. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project with the following conditions: the developer is responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Construction plans shall be consistent with the site plan, and payment of all requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. A revised utility easement agreement with all necessary exhibits between the city and the owner must be provided for review and execute, and executed prior to the issuance of the building permit. A copy of an agreement for the private lift station must be provided for review and approval prior to the issuance of the building permit. Provide a written request to the Building Development Division to allow for the finished floor velvel elevation if it's below 18 inches of the highest elevation of the adjacent street. Provide a modified lift, a station detail for the site plan, and a 350 ASTBFE backflow preventer. Ensure all details on the site plan reference the City of Tarpon Springs. The applicant must provide shielded lighting and direct all lighting internal to the project. And the conditional use in site plan shall expire within one year approval if a building permit is not issued for this, for this property.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yes. I have two questions to ask you. Any concerns with a private lift station?
No, there is no concern. The lift station is existing there right now. It serves mostly, at this point, just the Mexican restaurant. They will not have to actually upgrade that lift station. They're just gonna need to provide a private agreement that, we know that there's gonna be maintenance happening there, because essentially, we have many private lift stations here in the city. So, we wanna make sure that we have at least an understanding of how they're gonna do their maintenance and that, that the, we know who the actual entity is that we need to contact should there be an emergency at that facility.
That's gonna be, the capacity of it is gonna be enough to cover both places?
Correct.
The floor elevation would be 18 inches below the street elevation. Is there any concern for flooding?
No concern for flooding. You're in the X-zone here, so as a result, that's outside the, the flood requirements. So, there is no concern with that. And again, the, the building official will actually make that final determination. I know that they have submitted their letter, but that doesn't actually get reevaluated until the time of building permit. So, while they can provide it to us now, it's really done when, when the building permit's submitted.
Any other questions?
I've got one. I see that there's, it says in the backup that I will contract with a professional artist to create a permanent public artwork as part of the development. Is that something that goes through our art committee, or does it come back to us to show us what it is or anything along those lines?
It goes through the Public Art Committee, and we've know, we've let an applicant know that to start that process, essentially, before they start working on their building permit process, 'cause it does take some time. They have to select an artist and go through the formal process. And then also, the art committee will determine what piece that artist decides that they wanna put on that property, what, what it's gonna look like. And they, and they evaluate all of that under the Public Art Ordinance. So, that will be taken care of. We've also notified them that they do have the option, should they choose to do a fee in lieu. And again, that's handled at the time of building permit. They don't get a building permit issuance without paying that fee or having a plan with the Public Art Committee.
I believe part of this backs up to a couple developments in the parking lot, right?
Well, there's 500, there's wetlands between them and the...
Worth that, doesn't some of the property north, or is it, none of it, none of the parking lot's gonna hit any of the neighboring?
No, you've got, you've got quite a few, you've got almost, almost 500 feet or more to the actual residentially committed property. Now, you do have Mobile Home Park associated to the north here, but they are providing the required buffering and, and with their wetland buffer, the parking lot's not actually going to butt up against it. It would be where the area turns to go to the lower part of the building.
That's what I just wanna confirm about the, I still consider Mobile Home Park a neighborhood. So, that the applicant's gonna have adequate enough, 'cause there's not a landscape plan that I saw that they had adequate enough planting that staff's gonna make sure that's the case, to make sure...
They're gonna speak to that tonight. They're, they're willing to, to discuss the plantings if that becomes an issue, but the, with staff will, they have to meet the minimum requirements of the Land Development Code, which is an eight-foot buffer, which they've got.
Okay.
It's just the plantings haven't been done, because they're still in the process of determining which plants that they wanna include. But they're looking for any direction or willing to take any, accept any direction that's provided tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Does the applicant wish to present to the board this evening?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Natesh Sapra. I'm a principal with Nitneal Partners. We're a real estate development company, a boutique company with offices in Atlanta and Tampa. And, you know, my company focuses on, on self-storage facilities in attractive southeastern communities like Charleston, Greenville, Tampa, Atlanta. These are some of the markets we've developed in. So, I did wanna say that our vision for this project is not your old-school type of storage facility. What we're proposing here is a, is something that architecturally is, is built at a very high standard. So, we really take our design or our facilities very seriously. So, I did wanna mention that, 'cause it is, is a newer generation type of product. Our typical customers, just FYI, are residents as, that are, you know, needing extra space, might be in transition, renters, homeowners, there's commercial users as well, attorneys, pharmaceutical reps are common, users of our, of our product, restaurants as well. And my civil engineer, John Mueller, is here as well tonight to answer any technical questions, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I just wanted to say thank you, because I think it'll be much better than what's there now.
Actually, I think that parcel's been for sale for how many years? 'Cause I've lived, I've lived in that area for, what, 30-something years, and it's always been for sale since I've lived, since I moved to Florida, though, Tarpon Springs, so, thank you.
Any of y'all are in agreement with the conditions set forth in the staff report?
Yeah, definitely.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, I just want some clarification, if we could help me out on a few things. Is there a fence that's gonna be going around the property, or is it just gonna be?
No, there will be no fence, although we probably will put a small section between the two buildings, just to prevent foot traffic from passing through.
Okay. And something I asked staff about, but I just wanna confirm with you, there's not gonna be like an entrance. A lot of these mini storages, you see like a, a rolling gate where it's difficult to get it out, and staff informing that there's not gonna be one that would...
That is correct.
The concern was traffic backing up in 19.
Correct. Yeah, we don't really have the maneuverability or the throat depth to be able to do something like that.
Okay.
Excuse me. My name's John Mueller, 18115 US 41 North, number 600 Lutes.
Pertaining to the landscape, since you're not abutting to any really residential area right now, I'm not concerned with that. Something I would like to compliment you on is the design. I'm not sure if everyone saw the design, but we, as a city, doesn't have, we don't have a design guideline, but I think this goes above and beyond, and I would like to say thank you for bringing a project to this, to our town, because it really, it, it shows that there's character to the front of your building and not, when you look at it, I wouldn't guess that this is a mini storage facing the facade. So, thank you for making that attempt.
Yeah, and the other thing, other comment I wanna make is, you know, we're working with our architect right now on the color scheme, but we, to the extent that we can pay homage to the Greek community here with some Mediterranean sort of color palette, we're gonna do that. But we obviously, you know, aesthetically, it's gotta all work out. But that's really our intent, is to, you know, is to really do something positive within the community.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Before y'all sit down, do y'all wish to make any kind of closing statement beyond what you've already said? Fair enough. Staff?
Not at this time.
Mayor?
Thank you. Do we have any other commission comments? If not, I will detain the motion.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikto?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 20 is a resolution 2017-46, application 1766, Clearwater Marine Aquarium. This is also quasi-traditional.
Resolution 2017-46, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number 17-66 for site plan approval for the Clearwater Marine Aquarium to construct a 55,216 square foot area, including two marine mammal rehabilitation pools, pool shade structures, and a mobile office laboratory located on approximately 1.72 acres of the northwest portion of Fred Howard Park, further defined in Exhibit A, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrency, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. Resolution 2017-46.
Thank you again, Heather Earl, our staff, for this application, Planning and Zoning Director. This is actually for a stranding station. Clearwater Marine Aquarium, at this time, does not have a facility where they can rehabilitate their mammals, or mammals that are stranded. So, as a result, they went to Pannellus County and asked for a lease to, to use a portion of, of the park that was this old spoil site. And so, the area's already a disturbed area in the park to create this facility. Essentially, they've worked with staff through a variety of different issues. This is in the flood zone. There's a variety of different issues related to this particular development. And with that, we've finally come to, after a long, long, hard summer, to a project that everybody can get behind and support. So, with that, staff is recommending approval. The board did, the Board of Adjustment did grant a variance for a parking lot and for a screening landscaping waiver. Essentially, that's because it's located in the middle of the park. It's adjacent to mangroves and a lot of, a lot of other areas that are well-screened. This is not a place that's gonna be open to the public. It's really a lockdown facility that the only time it's gonna be in use is when they need to, they need to work with mammals that have been stranded. Recently, they've had several of animals that they've had to relocate to other places, and they, they almost didn't make it as a result of having to be... and the animals didn't make it as a result of having to be put on trucks and loaded to take somewhere else. So, as a result, this is a facility that's really needed by Clearwater Aquarium and Aquarium. Again, the, the only issue that we do have on this particular property is it appears that they have a couple of gopher tourist burrows that may be active, so they'll have to relocate, they'll have to get a permit to relocate those gopher tourists elsewhere in the park. There is sufficient acreage there in that park to do that, so I don't, I don't think that there'll be an issue with them providing, getting their relocation permit, but that is another ongoing issue that they will have to work through. They've addressed all of our drainage concerns and all of our other concurrence requirements. The technical review committee has determined the application is complete and moved forward to Planning Board. And Planning Board asked some really interesting questions. We had a very interesting conversation about, you know, how the facility's going to run and really how the benefit of this to the greater community. I think that there, it's obvious a benefit to the greater community to providing an environmental service that we currently don't have anywhere in this particular portion of Pinellas County. So, ideally, it's meeting all of the criteria. They're not asking for any land use change or any zoning amendment. Those are both consistent. They're in the, they're in the recreational and open space. Land use, they're in the land conservation area. It's an appropriate use. And with that, they're meeting all of the criteria of the site plan and staff is recommending approval with the following four conditions. One, the developer is responsible for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits and approvals and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Any lighting to be installed onsite is to be shielded and directed internal to the site. Construction plan shall be consistent and with the approved site plan and the payment of all requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. And the site plan shall expire in accordance with the approved alternate phasing schedule as depicted on C 2.2 within three years of the effective date unless the application has been filed with the building permit, for building permit with the construction plan signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed in the state of Florida. They're actually going to phase the different, the different portions of the project so that eventually and over the course of the next three years, everything's going to come in there because it depends on their funding. They are a 501(c)(3). This is not a, a private firm that's got an endowment. They're, they're based on the monies that they have to move forward with the project. So, that's essentially why the phasing schedule is being proposed. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. Thank you, Heather. I noticed that these tanks are pretty large, 50 by 60 by 10, and I approve this project, but would they be visible from Seabreeze Drive? I mean, I was looking at where the location was and it looks kind of on the west.
Well, it's possible that they're going to see, they're going to see them, but again, this is surround, the site itself is surrounded by mangroves on the one side, so I don't know how visible they'll actually be. I mean, a 10-foot-high tank's a pretty good-sized tank. If you're up on some of those elevated houses, it's possible they can see over, but they're not going to be visible in the sense, you know, like that you are on the golf course and seeing the big tank there. It's going to be a little bit, it's going to be a little bit more secluded because of the screening that you have and the spacing that you actually have between Seabreeze and there. There is some distance.
I just wondered if some of the residents could bring that up.
But they, yeah, it is possible that they will, they can see those tanks from, from that area.
Okay. It's definitely going to be a benefit to the community with the, and service. I'd be even more excited if we could have visitors attending Howard Park. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Does the applicant wish to present this evening?
I'm Mike Hurst, Clearwater Marine Aquarium, the Vice President of Operations and Zoological Care, 249 Windward Passage, Clearwater, Florida, 33767. Thank you for allowing us here tonight and speak. I think Heather did a phenomenal job of really explaining what we are here for, but as she indicated, we are no longer able to house or do quarantine of marine mammals at Clearwater Aquarium on the island. We have gotten too large and there are a lot of organisms out there in the community, of course, with these wild animals that we don't want to take any chance on having these organisms get into our collection and harm our animals that cannot be released. So, as Heather indicated, for several years now, it's actually been about two years, we've been working with the county and we looked at a couple other parks and we really, we really focused in on Fred Howard Park for a number of reasons, but CMA, Clearwater Marine Aquarium, is responsible for stranded animals all the way up to Levy County. And so, originally, we were looking at South Pinellas County and we said this was really kind of silly because we want to be further north and closer to or more central to our entire jurisdiction. And so, Fred Howard Park allowed us to do that by also then staying into the county. So, I can answer any questions you may have. I think Heather did a pretty good job of that, but we appreciate your time.
Thank you. I have a question to ask you. Is there any place in the future for this according to become an attraction where students will come and see the animal?
It, it cannot happen in Fred Howard Park under, so we are permitted through National Marine Fisheries. We are also permitted through Fish and Wildlife and NOAA. Their guidelines and regulations do not allow the general public to view or see wild or rehabilitation animals. Again, if you think about it, we do not want these animals to be conditioned to humans. We want to be able to get them healthy and then release them as soon as possible. So, there would never be an opportunity for public viewing in the park in this facility.
I've just got one quick question. We recently had, I believe, our aquarium vacate part of the Sponge Docks. I'm not sure if you've all...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they're, they're planning on building somewhere else, right? Have you guys looked at other areas of rehabilitation, like there's already going to be a giant tank there and I would imagine it would be difficult? I don't know who the, I don't know who the landowners are, but I would imagine it'd be difficult to re-rent to somebody else that's not targeting something along those lines.
Understand, and, and again, going back to really our guidelines through fisheries is seclusion is better, quiet is better. Again, you think about this, we're taking a wild animal who is not used to noise or traffic or things of that, and that's what, those were all of the benefits that drove us to Fred Howard Park because we're in the middle, for lack of better terms, in the woods. And it's, it is meant to be secure and it's also meant to be very quiet.
How's work, what's your agreement? Do you guys have a key then to get in, obviously because it's gated every night and I would imagine there's emergencies that happen?
Correct.
Random times of the day.
Correct. So, when, when and if an animal comes in, of course, we work 24/7. When an animal does come in, we will be in that park 24/7. We stay with the animal. We never leave the animal alone, so we run three shifts. The county has provided us the access to the park at night. We also have a deputy sheriff, of course, that lives there as well, so he's also, he or she is also our eyes and ears in our security as well.
What's the most extreme animal that you have? Like, I would imagine you would like rescue otters, potentially dolphins.
Correct. So, the, the permit and what we're utilizing this facility for is cetaceans or dolphins, dolphins and small whales. And so, that's typically what we'll see there. Maybe in the future, you may see one of these pools become a manatee pool. I am talking to Fish and Wildlife about doing manatee rehab, but we haven't spoke specifically to this location. We also rehabilitate otters and one of the options and one of the things we will look at and examine is would this place down the road, this facility, be a good area to rehabilitate otters and maybe do a soft release? So, those are all potential options, but our number one focus right now is focusing on the cetaceans or dolphins and, and small whales.
So, and we could probably take this and the private conversations, but how does it work then? You take the, the dolphins here, you drop them in the tank and then after they're in there for three weeks, two weeks, three months, then you take them back out to the area you found them or you put them out in Fred Howard Park or how does that work?
It, it depends on where they came from. Did they belong where they were? Was that a safe environment? If it wasn't a safe environment where they were found, we will take them to a safer habitat. The process, the rehab process can take as little as three weeks. It can take as long as a year, depending on the health and the well-being of that animal and depending on what they are. Clearly, as you can see with the case of Winter, she could not be released because of the loss of her flukes and so she became a permanent resident. So, if there was a case like that and the veterinarians and the government decide that this animal is non-releasable, then that animal would be, then be relocated to Clearwater Marine Aquarium.
How big are the trucks that transport these?
It's a single-axle vehicle. Typically, it's a, like an F-550, so it's basically a big box truck, but it's not a tractor trailer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Now, I have a question to you, Mr. Seabreeze Attorney. I believe this property was donated to the city, it was, the city donated to the Pinellas County for recreation purposes many years ago. Is that correct?
That's correct to the best of my knowledge, though. Candidly, I have attempted to find documentation to that with the county and I don't have any.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that this agreement between the city and Pinellas County, it will not be in violation.
No, it's not in any violation of any written, written instrument that I can locate.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, state your name and address. You're given four minutes.
My name is Annie Samarcos, 1110 South Florida Avenue. Okay, so I was like looking on my phone, where's Levy County? I think it's Cedar Key, is that correct? So, I'm kind of confused that like from here all the way up to Cedar Key, there's nowhere else. As you go up the coast, it's less remote, less populated, right? More like a coastline that maybe you could put these tanks where they really have the seclusion they need for, for the animals to not be stressed. I think that the Clearwater Marine, I know that it started out as a rehabilitation facility. It has truly become a tourist attraction because of the, the movie about Winter the Dolphin. If you go see it today versus what it was when my children were little babies and little children 25 years ago, it's truly not the same facility. So, I see now they want to keep theirs an attraction and bring tourists to their community there and they still want to be able to do rehabilitation, but not because they don't have room to do it anymore there possibly. But I don't think Fred Howard Park is the right location for it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this application?
My name's Connor Donovan. I'm a student in the area. I just wanted to know with, without like public access to it.
State your address for the record.
Oh, sorry. 858 Briar Court, Tarpon Springs. I just wanted to know, I know it's county land, but without public access, I just want to know if there's any like financial reward or incentive for the city to go along with this? Like, is this just something we have no choice in because it's county land or are we getting anything financially out of it?
This is the county land. We have no, no benefit whatsoever.
Okay. And then my, my only other question is, when this stuff's being built, is it going to affect park access at all to Fred Howard Park? All right, thank you. That's it, sorry.
Thanks. Any other members wishing to speak in support? Does the applicant wish to make a closing statement or summary of any kind?
I would just like to say thank you. Your staff has been phenomenal. Your board has been great. I just wanted to say thank you to the commission. Thank you to the staff. We're, we have been welcomed into Tarpon Springs with open arms and we're looking forward, hopefully, to a great success and a great future. Thank you.
Staff wish to make a closing?
Not at this time. I'm just open for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional comments, question?
I've got another question. Heather, do you know the agreement between the Marine Aquarium and Pinellas County? Are you familiar with that at all?
Yes.
Okay, so is it like a revocable agreement or is it for X amount of years or?
The licensing agreement that's actually is part of your backup because that's the only thing we have for legal description. It basically gives them a numbered-year lease for, for that portion of the property, only that portion of the property that they can, they can utilize that property. Now, it does allow for them to renew that, so that's the vehicle under which they're doing it, but there is no economic benefit to the city because it's really not our property. We just have the jurisdiction for the building permit process. That's why they're here.
Yeah, I was just thinking from the county, I know we're not county and we're the city, right? So, if the county wanted to expand the park for whatever reason to the north, that at the expiration of some X amount of years, they could potentially do that.
I would, I would assume so.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I need a motion, please.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes. The next three items, 21A, 21B, and 21C are related, will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. Item number 21 is land use and zoning amendment. Keystone Road Hunt, ordinance 2017-21, the application 17-47, amending future land use from RL and RM to ROG. This is a second reading.
Ordinance 2017-21, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately 0.45 acres of property, 19,500 square feet, located on the south side of Keystone Road, approximately 200 feet east of the intersection of Keystone Road and Lake Tarpon Avenue, app 17-47, from RL and RM, residential low and residential medium, to ROG, residential office general, providing for definitions and providing an effective date. This ordinance 2017-21, second reading by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title on June 2, 2017, and December 29, 2017. You want to move forward with the other ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We'll read the other ordinance as well?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-22, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for approximately 0.45 acres of property, 19,500 square feet, located on the south side of Keystone Road, approximately 200 feet east of the intersection of Keystone Road and Lake Tarpon Avenue, we have 17-47, from R100A and RM15, single-family residential and residential multifamily, to RO, residential office, providing for findings and providing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance 2017-22 by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only with a map, not with a map, I apologize, on June 2, 2017, and December 29, 2017. And we have a third application here, 17-75, when the restrictive covenant staff is going to present them together. Please be reminded that you'll need three votes, one for ordinance 2017-21, one for 2017-22, and one for the restrictive covenant, application 17-75. Heather?
Thank you. There is no, there has been no change really to ordinance 27-21 or 27-22. However, the restrictive covenant that we talked about during those applications is really the application where there's been a modification because that's, that only requires one reading here and one here, one, as a result, we bring it forward at the, at the tail end for second reading. So, that document is really the only new information that's provided. However, you did see a copy of it as part of the ordinance package so that you knew what those, that information was going forward to the county because the county did require a county-wide land use amendment on this, so they need that, they wanted that information included. So, that's why that is going to be acted on tonight where it isn't, wasn't acted on at first reading. And I can answer any questions that you have.
I would like to ask you to explain the, the agreement.
The agreement basically outlines the limitations in the county-wide plan for the office land use. There's some limitations that the applicant can only build so big a building, so they have, is only so much forward area ratio that they're allowed to put on the site and only so much ISR that they're allowed to place on that site. And so, that is the major provisions. Included in that as well would be the cross-access that we talked about last time because they didn't do a vacation of the alleyway while we were going through the land use process with the county. And since the alley's now been closed, their only means of access is, is through the parking lot through a cross-access agreement. They'll also need probably a cross-drainage agreement as the site's smaller than the other site, so they'll probably do a unified drainage system, which will be included when they So they'll probably do a unified drainage system, which will be included when they come for a site plan. So they'll include the site plan, the cross access agreement as part of that process.
Are any commission comments, question? Are there any public comments on those three items?
We need, because we're, we're in quasi judicial and part of this, Mr. Mayor, we're still going to go through that process as we do that, yeah. Does this applicant wish to present to the board this evening? I can see, Mr. Pressman? You're good. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Any closing statements or summaries?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, I need a motion for the number 21, which is the ordinance 2017-21, application 17-47.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 21B, that's the ordinance 2017-22, that's the application 17-47. I need a motion for that.
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozis.
Yes. And item number 21C, that's the application 17-40, excuse me, 17-75. I need a motion for that as well.
True.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis.
Yes. Thank you. Good luck to you. Happy New Year. The next item on the agenda is item number 22. This is the resolution 2018-01, Building Development Department Reorganization. Senior Attorney will read the resolution.
Yeah, that's titled as a resolution on your. Where is my resolution? Resolution 2018-01, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Authorizing changes in the Building Department, Building Development Department, including the revised title, job description, and pay grade for one position. And providing for an effective date here above. It's resolution 2018-01 by title only.
Thank you. Staff report.
As I sent to you last week, Anthony Mistraccio has resigned Developmental Services Director. Immediately. Bob Robertson, Vicky Russo, who's the second in command down there. Immediately, we began meetings to see where the organization was going to be going. One of our biggest deficiencies with him leaving is the position of Plans Examiner. We were lucky enough to have an open position, the former position is Steve Wire. So, Mr. Robertson and Ms. Russo has helped us put together a job description where we can take that existing job and add the Plans Examiner function to it. So instead of going out and advertising for a job we need, we can add that component that's going to be our biggest deficit as we work on all the rest of the things we need to work on in the department. So we were able to turn this over real fast. Robertson did the work, so we can talk a little bit about it, but this will give us the capabilities to do that higher now. It was very easy to tweak that job description because a bunch of cities in this area are looking for a Plans Examiner's position. The salaries, Clearwater, Largo, and several of them are all the same, which is the equivalent to our 19. So it was very easy to put where this would be slotted, to move from the 15 to 19, because cities have applications out and they fit in that range. So, I'm trying to save your voice because I know. But basically, he's put together this and going out with this. This will let us get to one of the immediate problems we have and add the Plans Examiner capacity that, that we are losing. While we do the rest of it about the replacement, getting a, you know, getting a, a building official. But as you know, we've had to have contingency plans because of what is going on. So, so our team will be putting everything together and it should be smooth and the public will notice no difference while we're doing a lot of things behind the scenes. So, you want to talk about anything I missed with this job description?
I think the only thing I'd add to that, Mark, is that there is no, currently no formal position of a Plans Examiner in the Building Development Department. That duty has been shared amongst the staff over time. Staff and the director and even sometimes with an outside consultant. So this provides a formalization of that position and I think it's very desperately needed.
Thank you. We're going to be using the outside contractor for three months. Do you think with the three months, we'll be able to have someone on staff capable of examining this plan?
Well, that would be a good goal. I hope we can. If not, then we would have the opportunity to extend that if we need to, but hopefully we can beat that goal.
And Mr. Licorice, we're still going to be looking for your director, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is the director going to be able to act, also read the blueprints as well?
We would hope so.
Okay, I mean, that should be part of his.
Yeah.
Yes.
Should be part of his qualifications, right? Okay, good. Any other, any question, any com, any commission? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Samarc, so this is not in, in a replace of Anthony's position as far as head of the department, correct?
Correct.
You haven't determined yet which course back you want to. Recommend to us for that or?
Right, well, that's what we're working on now. Anytime you have a new just job open up, we want to look at the job description. May bring back some changes in that as we go for director. Right now, that's not an immediate need because we'll be able to use our contract building official that we used before. So what we're trying to do is the things that, that we need to do now, those other things that come later and stuff, but. And it just so happened, we had that open position to do this with, otherwise we'd be having to bring some different maneuvering before you dissolve that stuff. Because that position was there, getting ready to be, be advertised and hired, we're able to use that existing one. As I say, we may have to come back with, to you in the future and try to get the components of the position we adjusted back later. But right now, that's not the immediate need. The immediate need is hopefully within three months, getting that on there for the person we've got in place. So, it was just a perfect scenario where Bob in a very short time, staying after a little bit, couple nights that week, working with Vicky. Could get this done with a job existing and the only thing consistent of it was moving it from a 15 to 19 to be consistent with the other jobs in the areas though.
And, and, and Bob's overseeing that, that department right there?
Vicky will be, Vicky will be the, the operator in the office and the inspectors direct, this is what she did a lot of times during Anthony's. She's very experienced running the office director, Anthony's assistant, I mean Anthony. Bob's assisting me in the whole vision, the needs, the job descriptions. He's the one who worked on this for me. So he is overseeing that aspect in his capacity of his new job with a little bit of assistance. So he managed the capacity within the job when he moved him into his job and stuff. So he is taking care of the overseeing assistant with, with those things with me. And I say the team of the three of us are gonna, are gonna try to make it so there's very little notice or in the public with building permits, with anything going on. There's very little notice that these components are going on behind the scene and the public is going to have smooth transitions on everything they do with building.
If there was Bob's there, I have, I have faith in the process. I just want to make sure that, is this, I think this is one of the departments, maybe this and the city clerk, that interact most with, with the, with the, with the, with the public. And if we get complaints, it's about permits and whatnot, some of them aren't, aren't warranted, but they're complaints. So I want to make sure that we really take, I guess, advantage of the situation and make sure that we have the right team there in place. And we grow that department and move the more electronic things and all that kind of stuff. So, don't hesitate to come back. I know you said about, it is very competitive. I think we're all willing to pay whatever, 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 whatever we have to get somebody competitive in there and not just, you know, arrest them what we have.
Yep. We'll be doing that.
Mr. Licorice, again, I'm glad that Mr. Robinson will be overseeing this department. He's still capable.
Thank you.
And we are glad that we have you. You've done so many good projects. Thank you. One question that I have is, we're going to have a contractor to, for three months. Is that one person will be able to cover the workload for, to be able to issue the permits?
We have several things going.
The reason for that is, I think our, our, our activity has been increased.
We have a lot of experience with contingency plans, as you know, over the past. So we not only have that person dedicated for the two days, but we're also going to have contract firms available for the, so that's just one element. The other element is, for instance, a big project comes in, we wouldn't want to tie up the person we have for two days on a big project. We'd use one of our con, so that's one of the things putting together, a lot of things are already in place from before. And again, we have a lot of experience and with Vicky running the office, doing the inspectors and stuff, that's all set. We just got to work with Jay Jackus to see if there's any other contracts. Again, you know, we're going to set up contingency plans for the contingency plans as, as we've done there. So we've got the willingness of the person who's been doing it for a long time. She's, she's agreed to again come out of retirement for us and she's done several times. Eventually she wants to get to retirement. But she's agreed to come out of it again for the three months due to two days. We'll also have a firm, maybe the one now, or maybe what we'll be looking at is some other firms. And the emphasis we're going to have is the turnover of the person, so, so they can turnover faster, not sitting in the company for six weeks and so. That they'll turn over. So we're also going to be looking at those other places to supplement. Plus, if the three months go by and we don't have that person hired, we have to have. And, and our person Ivy, who's so graciously for all these, this long period of time helped us, decides to actually stay in retirement. We need to have those plans in three months so we have those companies and the availability of contractors, some of those companies do it. So that's all the three of us are going to be working on for the, for the next three months to make sure we have plans and then plans to back up that. As we've been, unfortunately, like I say, we've had a lot of experience with that. So we'll have, we'll have those set up and stuff. And again, with the hope that the public won't notice hardly anything that, that's going on with what we're doing.
Okay, good. Permission kick.
Thank you. Again, like it's been said, Mr. Robertson's on it, so we have full faith in, in Bob. He's, he's been such a tremendous asset with his new position, you know, taken on with, with the city. And I'm, I'm sure things will run smoothly. And I want to thank the, the Building Development Department because I know the past year or so, there's been some hurdles and different things that have happened in, in your department, but you've worked as a team and worked well. And again, if we can just continue as, working as a team here and just serve the residents and, and the contractors that come, come through as efficiently as we can and overcome this hurdle, and I know you guys can do it, but thank you for your hard work. And hopefully, we can find somebody or somebody within can move into the, into the position as well.
One of the good things you did when you gave me the position there, obviously, you know, I use Bob Cottin for a lot of things of assistant manager type internally, personnel wise, that sort of thing. But on projects or something like this, the ability to give me somebody like Mr. Robertson's capacity that can also do that is just a tremendous help to me. Otherwise, I would be trying to get in the, the nuts and bolts with the different things I have to do. So again, organizationally, when you put together that position to give me some assistance when these, these problems, these issues come up. So he can kind of be me and my eyes and ears, helping put the department back together and deal with the things that needs to be dealt with. That's a tremendous help, help to me also. So again, thank you for that ability. And we've seen how it's paid off when we need the help, when a, when a situation's come on that we need, that I need some assistance on to make sure everything goes smooth in a transitional process such as this, that's been very difficult to deal with.
Thank you.
Permission Steve.
Thank you, Bob, for stepping up and being who you are. And I agree with Vice Mayor, the effectiveness and efficiency of this department is really important for our residents and our business owners. So I'm hoping that we can get this position filled quickly. I noticed that in 1.6 here, they will be performing inspections, so this will be somebody certified to do inspections as well. How many inspectors do we have right now? Do you know?
We have four, three, three active.
Three? Yeah, because that's, that's, I know we have higher rate of, of coming in and we need to keep up with that, so, thank you.
Just a clarification though, 1.6 is crossed out. That's one of the old functions.
It was hard to see what was crossed out.
Yeah, if it's, if it's red.
Okay.
That's not an.
So will that person be certified to do inspections?
As a Plans Examiner, no. No, their, their primary functions are examining plans, interacting with the public, drafting, preparing comments.
That's why we had told you that we may need to come back to you later to solve that problem. And, and with the number, we don't see the increasing number of inspections going down. So this is temporary, but we may need to come back to you as we're looking at, at the totality of it and look at something to assist. In fact, I almost guarantee you, we're going to be coming as just how long or when we need to do it.
That's one of the complaints I hear is, you know, permitting is delayed because of inspections.
So we may be, but for this time, we can use this position for that. And then again, we'll probably be coming back to you with something to assist in the inspections aspect because we don't see those numbers going down. We just see them going up. And if we want the efficiency in the timeframe, we're going to have to do some additions to the apartment. But, but that'll be in the whole overalls of the plans and again, looking at the fees within the department and all that that we're going to be looking at, that'll be all incorporated into there.
That is something that I hear a lot.
But this just solves the immediate, our immediate issue right now.
Thank you.
Permission Carr?
I mean, part of the stipulation too, it says building inspector, or must obtain professional state certification of building plans examiner and building inspector within three months of hire date. So that's, although it doesn't have it in there, they're required to still pass the building inspector certification, so that's encouraging, I think. One thing I wanted to touch was that the pay grade differences. I'm completely for paying for quality staff members. I think that's important. I want to touch base, Mark, on a budget standpoint, I think it's about $30,000 or just under $30,000 difference. Where's, where are we mitigating that in the budget? Has there been discussion or is there room?
We still, probably with the open salaries and with the open area, we'll be able to come, we're thinking of cover it with the open positions, the salary will be able to cover it. Obviously, if we can hire somebody fast, it'd be, you know, better on one aspect. But if not, we'll, we'll look for other areas to supplement that stuff. But, but a good portion of it will be from, from salaries that are vacant, from vacant position.
Okay, thank you. Also, Bob, thank you for, I was surprised to see your name on the emails going back and forth. But thank you for stepping up and helping out in this situation. It's great to see. I know we have multiple staff members that do multiple things throughout the city and it's encouraging to see our staff members again step up when needed, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for kind words and, and thanks also to Vicky who's, you're in good hands with Vicky running your department, let me just say.
We're now going to the public comments. Any public comments on this item? We hear none. The chair will attain a motion.
Motion, second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes. Item number 23 is the ordinance 2018-01, 20 authority. This is the first reading and the senior attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2018-01, in order to the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending chapter 18, traffic, article 1 in general, section 18-3. City manager authorized to establish speed limits, parking regulations, and chapter 18, traffic, article 2, parking, stopping, and standing. Division 1, generally, section 18-11, to authorize towing of vehicles parked in designated no parking areas. Providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. First reading of ordinance 2018-01 by title only, second reading to be held on January 23, 2018, and to be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January 12, 2018.
Mr. Licorice?
The city attorney's due diligence of looking at issues was not really comfortable that we had the proper capacity within the codes to tow vehicles from, from our own public places. So to ensure no court action, or if there's court action, we prevail. He revised and did this ordinance for us to make sure we solidify our authority that's defensible. Again, we're in the process. He comes up several times a month, meets with staff, we talk about correcting ordinances. We, we have these conversations all the time. In fact, we got a string of them that's going to probably come to you as we go through them. To just make our codes better and more defensible in court and again, to be good enough so we're not taken to court. So this is one of the things to make it real clear, our authority to do it. He can speak to any more about it, but again, this is just something to cover us better for towing vehicles from, from our properties.
Mr. Licorice, explain to us if you would, do we have some kind of a procedural criteria? When do we use this process to tow a, a vehicle? Is that going to be the, the exception or not to the rule or?
Yeah, it's very few and far between. Obviously, there, if the case is abandoned one, there's some times when we post lots about events. Being next then parking is closed for today and, and the car is abandoned and the police department in their role make every effort to try to find, go knock on the doors. Friends of his downtown, the apartment's upstairs, try to find somebody. If it gets to the last moment and you can't, obviously, we have to tow the vehicle away. So nothing's going to change from anything. It's the rare exception. I don't think we do very many. We usually find the owner or the car is abandoned and probably gets, you know, in storage salon goes away because someone's truly abandoned and it's gone. So this is used very rarely, but again, the rarest this is used, this will give us the, the proper ordinance to, to do that with. So nothing will change on those procedures. It's, it's the absolute very last resort in any cases. Again, it's not used very much during the course of the year.
Okay. Any commission comment?
I just have a question. We have a contract with one towing company. Are we still using Bradford or we use?
It's multiple, is it, like three companies?
Oh, we do, okay.
Yeah, it's rotation list from companies.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
I noticed that it's also authorizing the city manager to establish speed limits. So yeah, but I I get a lot of citizens complaining about can we change the speed limit on this street? Or can we do something about towing? I think a lot of people are not aware also what's a city street and what's a county street. Do we have that anywhere on our website? Because I get that question a lot, you know? I'd like to have a speed limit changed on on this street. Well, that's that's a county street. So do we have that anywhere?
I don't think we do because it's so.
I, you know, I just the average citizen.
Sometimes we don't even know. A lot of times we gotta look to know.
That's true. And and sometimes I don't, but I get that question a lot.
We'll analyze. I mean, we'll look if it's ours. If it's not the county, we'll ask, we'll send, refer to the county. When we get the different inquiries and stuff, the police is involved with it. They've got the actual, you know, people that do that. So if it is that, we'll just we'll refer to them.
Just as a commissioner, I get asked that question. So I I didn't know if we had that anywhere for people to see.
Any public comments on this item? We hear none? The chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
End roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Item twenty-four has been deferred. So that concludes the regulation session agenda tonight. And we go to the staff comments. Major? City attorney.
As you know, the legislative session opened yesterday. There are a number of items on the agenda this year that may impact local government's ability to operate and operate effectively under home rule. I will be trying to periodically give you an update of where those bills stand. We do have an attorney in the office whose job it is to monitor the progress of those bills through the legislative process. But please feel free to call my office if you're having any specific questions about that.
You be able to send us an email with all those concerns?
We can. You know, we'll update you on a periodic basis. But again, I don't want to flood you with information either. So we'll be watching those as they move through the process and update you at an appropriate at appropriate times. They all they obviously track differently. So we'll we'll get you periodically.
City manager.
Just to carry on a little bit on that and be a little blunt. First of all, obviously, you know, we don't have any representation in the Senate. So that's an issue, but we have none. So the way it is. But I know we've talked with city managers and mayors and the reluctance. We do have a member in the House. And we need to watch what's going on because if our representative, Mr. Sprouse, starts voting against the home rule issues, then he is not a friend of ours and somebody who is doing what his representatives is. And we have to watch that closely. I know it's a fine line because of him being our representative, maybe going on in the future. But this attack on home rule that we're seeing, home rule is very important in the state. The individual community is what's good for Tarpin, may not be good for Midair Beach, what might be good for the other coast. The thing about Florida law is the communities get to regulate themselves in all the area. And there's an absolute big move. And you know who are some of the ones behind it? At the head of the people who are trying to strip cities that rights decide what's good for their citizens and have a uniform state rule. That is probably their biggest assault on you and your ability to rule and and set this community. And if we have elected officials, whether they're ours or others, that go against that, and we need to be vocal and speak out that are not representing us. So it's a very fine line, but we need to watch how the votes go on. If we're gonna have any control of regulating our trees, if we're gonna have any role in 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 regulating anything, or it's all gonna be standard state rules that everybody has to follow, even though people in our community, you know, that might not fit for our community, they're just gonna take that right right away from you, the state. And we all can see how the state operates and stuff. And you at the local level are the best thing of working for what the citizens in this town want and the needs for the citizens of this town. And we have to fight as hard as possible to keep the state from taking that away from us. And I know it's a very delicate item and stuff, but we need to be diligent on that. I want to thank everybody in the city, police, Public Works, everybody with the Epiphany ceremony. That is a tremendous, long, week-long or more operation with the barricades, with the security, with everything that goes on. And everybody performed well. I know everybody's exhausted. We always look forward to January seventh and eighth, that the holiday season's over, where most people's holidays over after New Year's. We continue through Epiphany and raft event here is everyone, police officers, Public Works people are getting those big heavy barricades off the street and trying to load up. So to you, to Public Works officials, to everybody, it was a long, hard week. But I think as far as the city's part of things, that we made things proud. And we had a lot of hard work from city staff to to pull everything off. And again, the assistance from from other law enforcement agencies and Homeland Security because obviously and unfortunately, this event is a target. No matter how people think about security and at events, this is a target. So a lot of people were involved in making sure everybody was safe during this time, that you could see and that you couldn't see. So I want to thank all those people from a lot of other agencies, local, state, county, federal, that was involved in the whole process and a safe Epiphany and a good Epiphany. So I want to thank all them for that.
Madam City Clerk.
I just wanted to remind the board that Wednesday, the January seventeenth, is our first night of our fifth Citizens Academy. And staff is looking forward to the next nine weeks of that.
You already have people for the next one, too.
And we do have people signed up for the for the sixth class already for the fall session. It's very it's gotten very popular.
Good. Commissioner Kikta? Any comment?
No, I have no comments. I just.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. I have two. First, Mark, I know you said that though after Irma, you were you were you were gonna come to us with a list of needs from the reserve fund. You know, it is January. Obviously, we're a good five months out. No one wants to talk about hurricanes. But I like to have whatever you need bought and in place by June. You know, we do have a high tropical storm risk here in June for the for the west coast of Florida. And then we kind of take a lull till, as we as we well know, in September. So, you know, whatever you need, I like to have that brought forward and done. I don't.
Already got the second crack for the generators out and forbid to hopefully be coming back you, which is the number one need. And we're also working on that, to again, try to get to you by that date. So we're ready when the next season starts. But we are in the process of work again. The number one with the generators, we have, we're all ready for rebid and hopefully to bring you the proposal and get those.
Even the small things like the fridges at the E O C and just it was a good dry run.
Yes.
A second, I want to thank our city attorney for bringing up the home rule issue. You know, we we govern, I'll go on just a small rant here. We govern where we live. You know, we members of the public, they all live here. If we act bad, you know, we hear about it, walk into the car, okay? People in Tallahassee, you know, they govern away from us. So we have to watch what they're what 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 they're doing. And I found the last session to be to be to be very hostile to to home rule. You know, and 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 I'm friends with 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 Chris and I've talked to him. You know, I've had some very blunt conversations where 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 we have we have disagreed. And I think it's important that we be very proactive in in the when the when monitoring that. And the thing that we can all do, you know, it's it's gonna be election season here in the fall here for for Tallahassee. And they start coming, they start noticing where Tarpin Springs is around, you know, June, July. They want endorsements for all their flyers. And I've been guilty of just saying yes, you know, I know you were friends, I'll endorse you. But think about that. When 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 somebody asks you for your endorsement, ask what have they done for for Tarpin Springs? How have they made our jobs easier? Not just that we didn't get state funding for the dredge. That that's a multi-tiered thing. I'm talking more just what have they voted on, what 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 have they supported personally? And how and how have have they responded when we've asked them on a on a on a specific item? So, you know, I I I and I and I and I and I would also watch, you know, how our representatives behave according to the ballot initiative for the for the for the for the for the 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 homestead exemption, where we're gonna lose al- almost half a million dollars. And to us, that that's a lot of money. So we need to we need to be careful with our personal endorsements. And I think we need to be more active in monitoring Tallahassee in this session. And hopefully, I know where would I send it right now, but hopefully, I think there's gonna be a a a a like special election, right? I think there is.
If there is, though, it's gonna be by the time this election is session.
Well, hopefully, well, you know, again, you know, they're gonna be coming up here and campaigning, ask what you're gonna do for, you know, Tarpin Springs. And I think we, as the commissioners here in this town, that's our duty. You know, regardless of what party they're in or whatever, you know, we're we're kind of independent here. And we need to make sure that that our people in Tallahassee know that that we're watching them and that when it when it when it comes to to matters of home rule, that's the one thing I applaud the league on. And we need to be vicious about that. So 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 thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up with the Vice Mayor said, what I will suggest you to do is for us to a draft a letter, state our concern, and that should be one of our concern is the the home rule and anything else that we can think of and make sure we send it to our local representatives, who was included Chris Sprouse, being he's our local representative. And let them understand how we actually feel. Let's not wait till the the session is over. Let's do that upfront. Since I already have the floor, I like to have my announcements as Juliana Dave just said earlier that on Saturday, June thirteen, we have the Martin Luther King Parade. And that starts eleven o'clock from Tarpin Avenue, Levis, from Levis and Tarpin Avenue. And then at the Dorset Park, we have the festival and everybody's invited to attend. Also, on Saturday, January thirteen through Monday, January fifteen, at the Sponge Ducks, we have the arts and craft show. That starts in ten AM to six PM. Also, I'd like to welcome three new businesses to Tarpin Springs, the Oliver World Market, the Opal Greek Cafe and the Aloha Poke Bowl. So I like to welcome all to Tarpin Springs. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, yeah, speaking to home rule, I think it is important that we get involved and we're proactive. And I've spoken to Chris as well. I know we don't think the same there. And thank goodness for the League of Cities, who is very strong and they have great representation. But I wonder if maybe we should be stepping up more as well. As far as Epiphany, I do have to thank our police department and everyone in the city that a lot of people don't realize what the city does for Epiphany, how much we do to make this happen. And I want to thank you guys. I know you worked hard and and our Public Works Department. So thank you for that. And yes, happy Martin Luther King Day.
Permission Carr.
I just want to bring up one comment from Epiphany. It was a I thought it was a great celebration. And it's great to see the amount of people that showed up in the Tarpin Springs. One thing I felt that was lacking, and I saw local business owners stepping up and provided two porta potties on Tarpin Avenue. There with that many people, there's really not a any other area to use the facilities in that area. So I would like the city to see if we could sponsor with the the church of maybe providing one or two down by the Bay Area in the coming years, just so the people that are visiting Tarpin can make sure they have an enjoyable experience. And also, I want to bring up, there's a there's still a dead tree, a pretty big one, under the power lines at the golf course mark along Pinellas Avenue. It's fallen down. I believe a part of it's been cut. Is that on the list of being removal? But there might be an issue because of the power lines.
I'm pretty sure, but I'll check tomorrow and let you know.
Thanks.
That's it? Mayor, come here real quick.
Of course.
For that, that's a very good idea, that that a letter that that you talk about. Mark, I don't even know if it needs to be on 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 the agenda for the next time, but I I think I think we all should physically sign it. So it's all of our signatures on there. I think that 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 shows some weight to it. So if it needs to just be physically here at the next meeting or even whatever, you know, just just so no later than two weeks from now, it is in Chris Sprouse's hand. And then I don't know how the Senate thing works. I guess nobody there, but it's at least in Chris's hand and Trish has it on file, you know, you know, for that. So we need to get. That's a very good idea from 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 the mayor. We need to get that out soon.
Okay.
Whatever guidance that the attorney can provide. Is there anything specific for home rule?
And I also like to ask everyone, if you have any any other concerns that you'd like to be included to the letter, please submit it to Trish. So we compile all that information in one letter. I think it's better if we have one letter for everyone, shows unity and strength.
I agree. I think we need to be proactive on this.
Commissioner Carr, did you finish? I didn't.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, good. Oh, well, that concludes the regulation session meeting, and it's adjourned at eight thirty-two PM. Good night, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight.